Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM on Monday, April 8th, 2024. I call this meeting of the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that the meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening it is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to the board are available to the town on the town's website unless otherwise noted. This is a hybrid meeting with members of the board, remote and in person. Please permit me to confirm that all members of the board and persons anticipated on the call are present and can hear. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Vice Chair Suzy Barry.
Yes.
Jill Hay.
Yes.
I'm Joe Pato, the board chair. Mr. Lucente.
Yes.
And Mr. Sandin.
Yes.
Joining us in the room are the town manager, Mr. Malloy. Mr. Malloy, could you? Thank you. And the deputy town manager, Ms. Axtell.
She just stepped out for a second.
All right, thank you. And also joining us remotely is the Select Board Executive Clerk, Kim Katzenbach. As members of the board are in a hybrid format, all votes tonight will be taken by roll call. Tonight, we do not have public comment, but if there are any comments on a topic, I ask that all comments be made with, that everyone remember that we are neighbors and are working together in the best interest of the community, and I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or reference to motives. When comments are allowed, an individual may comment for only up to two minutes. I will run a timer and at the end of the time, I will ask the speaker to complete their sentence and no more. We will move immediately to our first item for individual consideration. This, this is the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Ms. Axtell? Would you like to organize our discussion?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I had to run out and get my glasses. So there are two things this evening to speak about. One is the amendment for Article 48. I just wanted to, I sent the board the information on Friday. Mr. Kaufman had combined his amendment with Mr. Scheible's amendment, so now it is one amendment. Excuse me, that contains the amendment Mr. Scheible had submitted. He will be presenting that amendment this evening, so just wanted to clarify that. I know you took positions on both of them separately, but wanted you to be aware of that change. There's not, there's now not two, there's just the one.
Thank you, Ms. Axtell. And since the one labeled as Mr. Kaufman's amendment, I had previously taken a position of no favoring Mr. Scheible's amendment to that. I am now a yes since it is incorporated in Mr. Kaufman's amendment. So I believe we are five members in favor of the amendment.
Great, thank you. And then just wanted to let the board know Article 21 is going to be possibly be taken up this evening instead of on Wednesday. Excuse me, that's not what I wanted to mention. I wanted, I apologize, I'm a little scrambled. The moderator had sent in a message asking if the board would be willing to consider Article 24 on April 10th as at least as a time permitting item. So I was hoping the board could discuss that this evening. You all received the email earlier today.
Thank you, Ms. Axtell. And Article 24 is on funding for the 250th. Ms. Barry, as Chair of the 250th Committee, can you speak to the timing issue?
Yes, Mr. Pato. So my understanding is town staff, Mr. Malloy, Ms. Koznoff revised the presentation today, and I have not yet had a chance to look at that. So I understand should like move the article, but I'm leaning towards I prefer it's not moved.
So Ms. Barry, can you work on reviewing it determined? Is it just that you haven't had a chance to review the presentation? Or is there other elements of the timing? The moderator is looking to try to complete town meeting before May and shifting some articles around is part of that strategy.
I'm aware of that, Mr. Pato. It's a little bit of column A and a little bit of column B.
All right. Right. We are a little bit at the risk of town meeting choosing to go forward that way. But so if you, if you can prepare yourself just in case, but we'll let the moderator know that your preference is not. Any other.
Mr. Lucente, do you want to weigh in on this? Maybe you can be more persuasive than I can be. I would prefer that it stays on the date that we had settled with moderator, which I believe is the 24th.
I understand, and I'm not going to ask for it to move. Right, but remember the town meeting is in control of the order of presentation. So, so the likelihood is if we ask for it to stay on the 24th, it will. I'm just suggesting all preparation itself. Ms. Hay.
Is it possible that one of the citizen articles might be able to be moved to the 10th instead?
We can pursue it with the moderator and see. I have no more information at this time. Any other items on, on town meeting? I do have an updated position for myself on Article 40. Sorry, let's see, 48, which is the, not 48, 49, which is permitted uses for the center. I was a wait and I am now a yes. Mr. Sandin, you're presenting this, and I believe Mr. Lucente and Mr. Sandin, the latest review of this, you were both waits.
Mr. Lucente is reviewing the chart, Mr. Pato, that's what's going on in the room. I will say, if we can just skip back to 47, I am a wait. I would like to hear the conversation at town meeting.
Right, so you're remaining away.
That is correct, thank you.
As, as I am on 47.
And Mr. Sandin, I assume you're going to be, remain awake on 49?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Pato.
Yes.
I'm going to be a yes on 49.
All right, so we have four yeses and a wait. Mr. Sandin, this is your article to present?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, and Ms. Axtell, is there anything else for town meeting?
That's all for now, and I'll speak to the moderator this evening about the discussion.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the second item, which is to discuss the prioritization of intersections for the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, or RFBs, along the Minuteman Bike Way. We have Mr. Lipsy available tonight, town engineer, and Mr. Morrow, the Assistant Town Engineer, to walk us through the consultant prioritization scheme and Engineering Department's recommendations. Mr. Morrow, are you going to walk us through?
Yeah, yes, I am. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Ross Morrow, the Assistant Town Engineer. So this project came about as a, I believe, a resident request or a request through the participatory budget process and came to the Engineering Department. It was approved for $250,000 to be used to provide pedestrian crossing beacons or RFBs, rapid rectangular rapid flashing beacons, such the typical one we install at the Minuteman Bike Way crossings of the roadways in Lexington. So what we did was we hired contracted TEC, an engineering company, to review the locations for both the post setup as well as whether solar could be used or not, and also to rank the priority of which intersections we should look at first. So with that said, they produced a set of plans for us and we are getting ready to go out to bid. I believe the funding needs to be encumbered by mid-May, so we're hoping to get this done. Contract underway in the next month or so. So to the slides, what you're looking at now is RFBs installed along Mary Road at the Cary Ave intersection. Mass DOT did this installation through a request from the town. It's on the backside of a school, so a lot of kids crossing, well, several kids crossing at this point. But you can see black posts, push buttons. A little side note, I know some people have inquired about motion sensors for these, for the ones on the bike way. We don't feel those are the most appropriate. I think they'll pick up, you know, false, false cues, false signs that someone's getting ready to cross. There may be people who just go to that intersection, turn around and go back. We don't want to falsely have these lights flashing. But here's, here's a typical setup. If you go to the next slide, so this is the, the bike way overall. You have Arlington to the right of your screen and Bedford to the left. And what I've done here is outlined the crossings that we are looking at. The ones in the red boxes are the ones, so let me back up for a second. I should have put this in first. The way we're going to handle the bid for the contractor, we're not sure if our allotted, allocated amount of money will cover the full eight intersections. So we're going to, this is one of the reasons why we prioritize them. We're going to bid the project, assuming that the first four will easily be covered by the funding, and then the next four will be chosen in a specific order if the funding allows. So my guess is we'll probably get five or six. I don't think we'll have enough for all eight. So through the ranking from the engineer and in consultant consultation with the Lexington Bike Advisory Committee, we came up with the first four that this is what we call our base bid. I've shown them in red. Hancock Street, Miriam Street, Revere Street and Woburn Street. You can see obviously they're kind of clustered towards the center of town as that's where you get the higher amount of bike way users and also the higher amount of vehicles that travel through the roads that cross the bike way. And then as you, as you kind of expand out from the center, the additional locations, and these would be in order that they would be approved to be built, would be Fletcher Ave, Westview, Bow and Fodler. And then I just, just for a location purposes, I showed where Bedford Street and Hartwell Ave are, but they're currently signalized and we're not looking at doing any work on them for this project. So I just tossed in a couple of sample plans for you to see. Pretty straightforward as far as what the plans show. It's, it's kind of a couple of dots on a, on an aerial. But we try and place the, the RFB posts where they, one would be easiest to access from a user. So Miriam Street, you can see that if you're coming from the depot, it should be on your right. So you're already on the right side of the path. Unfortunately, on the other side, this is where we get into issues. Sometimes it may end up on the left side, just it's probably too close to the visitor center or could be, could be in shadows depending on why the engineer chose to put it there. But those are the types of things we look at. I believe the next slide shows, so this is Revere Street. And because of the tree cover, we're going to have to most likely do a hard power connection, hardwire power connection to a utility pole. And that's what the little dash line show is we will have to be adding conduit for a setup like this. There's just too much tree cover to allow solar to power the lights. And then the final slide of the plans that I included, typical details. This just sort of shows what, what it'll end up looking like in the parts lists involved. Just so everybody got to see what, what the plans look like. I did do, we, we kind of went out, took some pictures and tried to Photoshop in what these would look like from various angles at some of the streets. Just to get an idea of what they are, this is, this is looking down Hancock Street from the, the new roundabout. I did a few of these for, for each road. I don't feel like we got to flip through them, but just so you kind of get an idea of what they look like. You know, this would be the other side looking down Miriam Street and, and as you go. You'll notice if you hold on a sec with flipping, this sort of grayed out sign, that's the crosswalk sign we have there now. Those will be taken down as part of this process. So it's sort of a one-for-one swap with, with some flashing lights on the new signs. That's about it for this, and I open it up for your discussion and any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Colleagues, I see Mr. Sandin with his hand up.
So the liaison to the Bicycle Advisory Committee, my understanding was that the Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee would be interested in making a comment, but I don't know if she's in the room right now or not.
She is in the room, but there is no one yet at the microphone.
Okay.
Hi, this is, this is Betty Gao.
Switch on top.
Right, and Ms. Gao, I'll recognize him.
Hello, I'm Betty Gao, Precinct 8, also the Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Yes, we reviewed the locations of these flashing beacons and the Bicycle Advisory Committee took a, did a ranking, and we agree with the ranking that Ross just presented. And we appreciate that Revere Street was pushed up because it was a lower ranking, and now it's, I think, number three. So that being said, all of these crossings really require flashing beacons. There's been accidents and, you know, hit, people being hit in many of these locations. So the first four are very good. Hancock Street was designated as the most dangerous intersection on the bike way. When Tool Design did a comprehensive report in 2014, Hancock was the third most considered and identified as the third most dangerous crossing, street crossing on the entire bike way from Arlington to Bedford. And the first two most dangerous were in Arlington, and they have been, they've had safe design, safety crossings implemented. So now the number one most dangerous intersection on the bike ways, Hancock Street. So Miriam Street is also has been dangerous. In 2022, three people were hit in the crosswalk, two bikers and one runner. And the two bikers went to the Leahy Clinic, and this is from the police crash reports. Revere Street in February 2023, a biker was hit in the crosswork, crosswalk at Revere Street and was also taken to Leahy. We also appreciate that Revere Street is now the third priority of being, getting the flashing beaker because a lot of students cross that Revere Street crossing as they're going to Diamond School. I also just want to point out that Bow Street, which is prioritizes number seven, back in just November 2023, a pedestrian was hit in the crossway, the crosswalk and taken to Monopron Street. So there are a lot of accidents and these are just the ones that are reported. We noticed in the data at the Minuteman Bike Way Facebook group and on the website, we get a lot of reports of near misses, and those are not officially reported to the police. So they're not in the police crashes. So the Bike Way Advisory Committee reviewed all the bike crossings and ranked them for us, and we appreciate that they took our feedback to move the Revere Street crossing to the priority list, and we're very happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gao. Mr. Lucente.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. Just a question for Mr. Morrow. The current crosswalk signage that's on, for example, Woburn, the Woburn Street crossing here with the Dunkin' Donuts is, it actually has a symbol on it for both a bicycle and a pedestrian. And I noticed in the samples that you put up, they only have a pedestrian. Is that purposeful or is that a design that's not available? Just curious what the change in the design was and if you could speak to that, please.
I would, that's a great question. For the slide we're looking at now, these were just images we clipped out. So typically, RFBs are used for, for pedestrian crossings. But I will definitely review that. There's no reason why we couldn't put the, the bike with the pedestrian as well in, instead on the flashing beacon.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Mr. Lucente, is there anything else?
No, no, I think that would, that would be helpful just to give the driver an expectation of what may be coming across them. So, and that they know it's a bike path as well as a pedestrian path. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
We have someone else in the room who wishes to speak.
Thank you. I'm going to finish with board members and then I'll go to the public. I recognize Ms. Gao as a member of a committee giving a report. Colleagues, any other comments? No, I, Mr. Morrow, the only comment I had was you addressed it to some extent about placement of the, of the call buttons. I am concerned about the ones that may appear at a less than natural position. And I noticed in some of the layouts, they would be on the opposite side. And my concern with that is especially for bicyclists, that they won't get used if they're on the opposite travel lane. Is there any way to keep these on the right side of the travel lane?
Yes, we're going to do everything we can to put them on the right side of the person approaching the intersection. Some of the plans, the consultant did it as, as best they could, whether they thought there was going to be some sort of obstruction. But part of that will be, once we get into construction, final, you know, staking of the locations. Most of them will be on the right. I know Hancock Street will be a little tricky because the bike path goes right into the Mason's parking area. So there's a few of those that we got to look closer at. There are other methods we could use if there is an issue. We could put a, a short bollard on one side with the button and link it to the, the pole on the other. But we're going to try our hardest to put everything on the right.
Right, thank you. Mr. Sandin.
So I, I share Mr. Lucente's comment. I agree with Mr. Lucente's comment and Mr. Pato's concern. I appreciate, Ross, your, your, your idea of that there may be alternate methods. One of the alternate methods I'd maybe ask you to consider in this situation where a pole might be on the wrong side, where you might be forcing bikes into conflict with each other or it sort of would go against the safety thing, is maybe consider in those situations a motion sensor.
We can consider that. I'll take it to both Engineering Department and the consultant. It's a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. All right, seeing no other comments or hands raised from the board, I'll go to public comment. If you're online, please use the raise hand function or star nine if you're dialed in. And in the room, please approach the microphone. I understand there is a resident looking to speak in the room. Please introduce yourself by name and address and any relevant board or committee.
John McKenna, 9 Hancock Street. So I have an objection to two that are being proposed, which happened to be the first two on the list. As you know, we did a lot of work on the Battle Green Master Plan. We've already overbuilt that whole entire Battle Green portion of the master plan with all kinds of roadway things. Putting the one on Miriam Street on the visitor center sign is an issue. But I particularly want to talk about the one on Hancock Street because it's called the high accident area, and I'm looking at an email I had actually sent to Chief McLean, which he responded, and it was signed by David Bresnahan, in which there were zero accidents between 2020 and 2023. And there was one a year prior to that, 2019, and one in 2018. As you know, we are very upset still with the decisions made at this board to basically make our house, which is supposed to be in a historic quiet setting, lit up all the way around. And I would ask if we could have the slide put back up that showed the back of my house where they're planning on putting these. It was the picture that was taken, the photograph. So the next one down. So this one. So if you look at that one that's on the side of the house by mine, that light is going to flash into my living room and kitchen and my other bedroom. So now on the front side, you've totally encompassed it with lights, and now we're going to have flashing lights going off below. And if you leave that there, I can tell you that people use that bike way all hours of the night, which means in the middle of the night, when anybody's trying to sleep in that room, they're going to be subjected to these. And I also note that I was told that this intersection is also still being redone as part of this crosswalk, as part of whatever work they're continuing to do in the spring. So I'm begging you, please. I will, Joe. Please do not subject us to another thing here. It's not appropriate. The numbers don't show that it's needed. And it's really basically surrounding this property with flashing lights.
All right, is there anybody else in the room?
There is not, Mr. Chair, that wishes to speak.
Yes, that was the question. Thank you for interpreting. And I see no one online. So colleagues, are there any, is there any more discussion reflecting on what we've heard? Ms. Hay.
Ms. Morrow, can I just clarify that the light will only be activated, and this is part of your thinking, I believe, in not having it be motion activated. It's only activated if someone presses the button, is that correct?
That is correct. I will caveat, I just said to Mr. Sandin that we'd look into motion sensors if we found that would be a better system. But the plan is for push button activation only.
Okay, and, and maybe this is a question, I don't know, from Ms. Gao, but it would not, being an avid biker myself, so I would never consider riding my bike in the dark. But for people who are riding when it is not a high-traffic time, I would hope it would be less of a necessity to activate. And that would be a reason, I think, that I would very strongly oppose the motion activated in these areas that are more residential, you know, and more directly adjacent to residential, so.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hay. And I'll offer my comment also that I am concerned about motion activated crossings for the reasons that you've expressed, Mr. Morrow. So I would hope that would be a last option and probably not an acceptable option. The bollard has an opportunity to place a remote button from the sign itself. That sounds a lot more effective for, for what we're looking for. Ms. Barry, I see there's a hand raised in the room.
So, Mr. Pato, Mr. Lucente would like to speak, Ms. Gao would like to speak, and Ms. McKenna would like to speak. I'll leave it to you to determine in which order.
Right, so I'm going to Mr. Lucente.
So just a question for Mr. Morrow in response to Ms. McKenna's concerns. Are there any, I'll call them shades for lack of a better word, or ways to block the light so it doesn't? You know, because these lights are very close to residential home, I think. Is there a way to block it so the light doesn't hit the property? You know, sort of like shield, for lack of a better word, I guess.
Yes, that's exactly what we'd plan to include on any lights that are next to a resident. So yes, the shield in, in the Hancock Street specifically, we will do our best to aim them back out towards the roadway so they're not perfectly perpendicular. They're more twisted towards the approaching cars. And the other thing we're looking into is dimmable lights so that at night, they're not flashing quite as bright. You don't need them as bright at night, obviously, than you do during the day.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. And if there's any screening that can be offered adjacent to the home, that might, if that's feasible, that would be something I'd ask you to look into.
Good recommendation, I will do that.
So I know there are two more resident comments, but we have exhausted time for this item. Colleagues, we've been asked to approve the ranking, the prioritization. Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. McKenna would like to refute something that was said. Is that going to be allowable or not?
Ms. McKenna, you have 30 seconds.
Thank you. First of all, people walk there at night and they will do them. Second of all, there's no way to angle those the way the street is that isn't going to go into the back of my property. So if you take a vote, understand that.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Colleagues, so we have in front of us, the prioritization as recommended. Are there any adjustments to that? Seeing no hands in the room, seeing no hands online.
Mr. Pato, Mr. Lucente?
Mr. Lucente?
I'd like to understand more about how the angling and blocking will work. I would recommend we hold off on the Hancock Street one. I know that seems number one on the list, but I'm concerned that we're, you know, making a nuisance in someone's home. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that until we've resolved how it's actually going to look and feel. And I don't know what more information I'll need, but I'm concerned about that.
Mr. Morrow, if we go out for a bid on the order as listed, but before executing on the Hancock Street, review the actual engineering proposal for installation, is that feasible?
I will say, yes, it's feasible. I mean, we're going into the project knowing there's a possible change order. It's never something you like doing, but I don't know, if you said John Libsy was on, he would have a better understanding of that part of it because that's a tough one.
No, I don't see him on the list.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't think he was tuning in for this. He's got other commitments, but yeah, I mean, from my experience, there's always been times that we've had change orders to a project. But I don't like to have them prior to bidding the project.
Mr. Pato, Mr. Pinzino is on the list if he could be of help.
Mr. Pinzino?
Yes, if we bid it, if there's question on Hancock Street, I would, the preference would be to put that as one of the alternates so that we can do the base bid and not have change orders on the project. That would be the simplest because we do a change order, you're talking about cost. Even if we're removing one and adding one now, it's a different, you know, it's a different design, a different gear up for it. So if that's what the board wishes, we would have to put that as an alternate and bump one of the other ones up in the base bid so that we got that base bid secured and then had that be an alternate.
Thank you, Mr. Pinzino. Mr. Sandin, then Ms. Hay.
So what I'm kind of wondering about is, does, can we bring this back a little bit later to try to resolve this? Or does this required to be decided tonight for some, for some priority of staff bidding process?
Mr. Morrow?
I think it goes back to whether we would accept a possible change order. I think, I'm going to say, yes, I think we can, we can do it if we come back relatively soon. Like I said, we do want to have, I believe we need to have a contract signed by May 15th with a contractor. Takes about a month to bid a project and then another, yeah. So we need to finalize our project.
Excuse me, Mr. Pato? Mr. Malloy, the town manager, would like to make a comment if it's appropriate at this point.
Mr. Malloy?
Yeah, two things. One is it does need to be under contract by December 31st, but there was a goal to try to get these done this fall. If we do the bids as an alternate, Hancock Street as an alternate, then what we have to do is we have to exhaust all of the other base bid items before we go to any of the alternates. Then you have to do the alternates in order. And so that might create a problem overall. Another way that we could do it is we could have the intersections in a prioritized order, but then leave wording in the bid documents that the town would direct the contractor which wants to do first something, the order in which to do them so that we do have an opportunity to do some before we do others.
All right, so let me poll the board before taking a formal vote. Is there a desire to adjust the order with regard to Hancock Street? So Mr. Lucente, I see you saying yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pato, I would be a yes as this one is, you know, with probably the closest to any residents.
Right, I see Ms. Hay shaking her head up and down. So we have at least the majority of the board, so let's.
My, my concern is that we have staff in the Bicycle Advisory Committee telling us this is the number one priority. So I'm a little concerned about, and I understand the situation that the resident is raising, but we do have potentially life safety issues here. So I'm kind of concerned of adjusting the number one priority as presented to us by staff and the consultants.
All right, so I think we've had enough today. Mr. Morrow and Mr. Malloy, can we bring this back in about a week to do the formal vote? So we're not delaying this very much, let you get going, but it gives us an opportunity to have you just run down some of these issues and see if we can have a more concrete proposal.
Yeah, we should be able to bring that back in a week.
Very good. All right, so I will close this item for today and expect us to discuss it next week. Move on to item number three, which is a request for a parking restriction for the Rev Shuttle adjacent to the Brookline Bank. And we have Ms. Barrett, the Transportation Manager, with us tonight. And she is online, Ms. Barrett.
Hi, thank you. I am here seeking your approval for a parking restriction to be added to two meters that are on the depot side of Brookline Bank to make way for the Rev Alewife Shuttle, Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. So on this slide, you can see where the current, the current location of where the Rev Alewife Shuttle parks, that little carve-out in front of the depot building is where the Rev has been parking for most of its 10-plus-year history. However, that carve-out, while it may look like a public right-of-way, is not. It is indeed private land owned by the Lexington Historical Society. And so they approached us asking if we could identify a different place for the shuttle to park. So we worked, we worked with the 128 Business Council, which operates the Rev Shuttle and the Historical Society and the Center Committee. We met with the Center Committee and after looking at different options, they all agreed that this location right here, where these two-metered spaces are, would be the best option and that we should pilot it for a year just to make sure we don't run into any challenges. I did reach out to both businesses, the Brookline Bank and the Lexington Liquors, and they were both fine with this. This time of day, you know, just 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. is not a busy time for them. The liquor store isn't even open, the bank doesn't open till 8:30. So they were fine with this. So we are asking for permission to try this for, you know, one hour, one year pilot, just to see how it goes. And if it works out fine, come back to make that permanent. And on the next slide, if you could go the next slide, please. So this is a draft of what possible signage could look like. We could still play with what this would exactly look like and exactly how it would be posted. But as you may have noticed, where these two spots are located, there's a light post. So potentially we could have some most pounding bracket, a post mounting bracket around that light post to hold up a sign like this. Hopefully something that could also advertise the Rev because we really have no signage in the center for the Rev. And then I do think, given where the meters are, we might want to put something smaller on the meters, you know, just with arrows identifying, you know, those two spaces just to make it clear for people. So be working with DPW on that some more if this is something that you approve. And with that, I will take any questions or comments you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. So my only question is on the signage itself and that it implies with whatever regulatory requirements we have. But aside from that, I believe this is a good move. Mr. Sandin, your hand put up first and then the board members in the room.
So, so thank you for bringing this up. I'm just, could you remind me, where is it parking right now?
Right in front of the depot building at 13 Depot Square, so right in that curved area.
And, and the problem with it continuing there is?
That's actually private land. That particular space is actually owned by the Lexington Historical Society. I'm not sure how it came to be that the depot parked there, that the depot, that the Rev parked there.
So that was, so my follow-up question is, if for some reason, it sounds unlikely, but if for some reason or other somebody parks in one of those spots illegally, would the Rev be able to, I mean, go where it used to go just that one time? Or, I mean, what's the thought if there is somebody illegally parking in that location?
You know, I think it's the way we would handle anyone illegally parking somewhere. You know, if it was really problematic, you know, I think we'd handle it the same way. It's from when the Lexington Historical Society Board Member and Executive Director reached out, they, you know, they realized the Rev has been parking here for many years. So they understood that, know that it's a valuable service, and they really wanted to work with us to find a solution. I don't want to speak for them. I'm not sure if any one of them are here tonight. I have a feeling they might say, well, if it's just this one time, we understand. But again, I don't want to speak for them. It is private property and we need to respect that.
Thank you.
Mr. Pato, so Ms. Rockwell from the Historical Society is in the room. She's coming to the microphone.
Thank you. Ms. Rockwell, do you have a comment you would like to make?
Yes, Susan Rockwell, and I'm on the board of the Lexington Historical Society. We noticed, of course, that the Rev was parking in front of the depot and everyone kind of assumed that someone had given permission for it. And then we realized no one had. And it has created issues for people who are coming to the depot legitimately wanting to drop off things, pick up things, have business with the, with the society. So we determined that it probably was best if we made other arrangements. In fact, in particular, we have had recently a couple of confrontations between the Rev drivers and people legitimately in the area for society business. It seemed a good time to find another location.
Thank you, Ms. Rockwell. I think I agree with you. Any other comments from the boardroom, Ms. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So Ms. Rockwell, I want to thank the Historical Society for being so generous and patient as this has been going on for years. And thank you for looking into getting to the bottom of it. I would propose, Mr. Pato, that while we can't direct staff, that perhaps if we made Chief McLean aware and his staff, that they could monitor that and kind of keep an eye on it until the community got used to that space being used by the Rev Shuttle in kind of in answer to Mr. Sandin's concern. The second part is, Mr. Lucente wanted you to know that Mr. Michelson, who's Chair of the Center Committee, is online. He might want to make a comment.
Thank you. Before going to Mr. Michelson, colleagues, are you all inclined toward this? Anybody opposed? No, then, Mr. Michelson, thank you for your attempt to comment, but I would like to end this and give permission for this to move on. So I'm going to bring this to a vote because we are running behind. Mr., right, so the motion is to approve the reserving two parking spaces for the Rev Shuttle adjacent to Brookline Bank on Depot Square for the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. Is there a second? Been moved and seconded. Ms. Hay?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lucente?
Yes.
Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, it is unanimous, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number four, which is the Town Manager's Search Screening Committee charge. Ms. Hay?
So colleagues, you've seen this before. It was slightly updated based on a couple of comments, some typos. And as I've mentioned in the past, what we did was we sort of reversed the idea of retaining individual spaces for particular types of residents and instead have said five community representatives, which may be representatives at large, town meeting members, committee members. And we will take applications. What, I don't know if there are any questions. I think that's really the one piece that we discussed the last, most the last time. It is also reduced from 11 to nine, which is the other change since six years ago. Are there questions?
Right, colleagues, any, any comments or adjustments?
There's nothing in the room.
Thank you, no, nothing online.
I mean, we're still here, sorry, sense of humor.
And the, the hope would be that if we approve this today, that we will start advertising it tomorrow.
Right, now we will be able to form a committee forthwith and get moving.
Correct.
All right, seeing no comments. And I will ask if there's any public comment on this one.
There is no questions or comments in the room at this time.
And none online. I move to approve the Town Manager's Search Screening Committee charge as proposed, allowing staff to make non-substantive edits as necessary.
Second.
Second.
They moved and seconded, Ms. Hay?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lucente?
Yes.
Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, that's unanimous, five zero. Right, colleagues, we have, I think, Mr. Malloy, do we have enough time for the executive session? We have a good 10, 15 minutes?
I believe we do. It's a matter that we've talked about before, so I think it should be fairly quick.
Right, so we will move to our last item, which is to go into an executive session to consider the value of real property at mostly high condominiums. I move that the slide board go into executive session under exemption six to consider the value of real property and to not reconvene in open session. As the German for both open session and executive session will occur at the end of the executive session. Further, as Chair, I declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. Second, please?
Second.
It moved and seconded, Ms. Hay?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Lucente?
Yes.
Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, it's unanimous, we are going into executive session in a different Zoom session. And I will see you there shortly.